I think we have a great and incredible system. Very, uh, it seems to be.
It's like a grand, it's an incident, but yeah, I think it's the state to double our charging infrastructure on this law and it's basically based on this.
That's a pretty hard deal to do.
It's a different, it's a different.
Definitely.
The parking department.
Maybe you can have that as well as.
I don't know.
When am I? Yeah. Although it is possible, actually. Well, it's 12:00, 12:30, so, no, Zach, is that possible? Could you possibly do later?
We have another project.
Before it started to go really downhill. Yeah. That would be great. And if I'm out, I, I do have to pay attention to my, my clients, so if I can't make it, I'll text you. I'll, yeah, I'll text you.
Just send me a email. Because a lot of times if I'm ready, other meetings, I can still.
Sounds good. So 1:30 tomorrow.
That's when I check it online.
All right. Great. Yeah, I probably just want to go with what I have in the general supply to make sure that. Do you guys want to see?
Because it's Zach.
Really? You're gonna set up your, right? Transition to get them. Oh, my youngest one struggles. This is the resolution. Of course, my older one, he took it in stride. This is approved, so.
That is awesome.
This is famous.
Oh, yeah, I, I have copies of that.
I know. Seven o'clock thing. I was there, I was there for you. I was actually.
Okay. So we'll get started with the, uh, uh, meeting, the, um, my agenda.
In five. Unfortunately, we will ask.
Um, can we do the roll call, please?
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
All right. Counselor Noon would probably be on his way. Um, so I guess we're here to talk about the municipal aggregation, trying to get the best rate that we can for the next contract coming up in November. Why don't we start off and, um, we'll let you open up, Catherine.
Thank you so much, Counselor Leahy, Counselor Cirillo. Thank you for inviting me here tonight to talk about municipal aggregation and our opportunities to look at greening our next contract. I prepared a small, uh, presentation just to talk about what municipal aggregation is, how renewable in, uh, content is sort of explained and measured, and what other opportunities have happened in other aggregations, and where we might be able to go in the city of Lowell. So, oh, sorry. Takes me a minute to get used to the clicker. Let's start with talking about what community choice aggregation is. Community choice aggregation, also known as municipal aggregation, allows a municipality to procure competitive electric supply for its residents on behalf of its residents and businesses. It's allowed per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 164, Section 134. It, um, allows customers to participate on a voluntary basis. It's an opt-out system. You have the opportunity to opt out of the program. If you would like to go with your own competitive supplier, you can also stay on basic service. Our aggregation plan began in April of 2014, and since it began, it saved our residents around a million dollars versus the basic service rate. So, how do we track renewable energy content? One of the things that we do is we have what's called the Renewable Portfolio Standard. According to Mass. General Law, Chapter 25A, Section 11F, there requires a certain percentage of the state's electricity to come from renewable sources. This is known as the Renewable Portfolio Standard, or RPS. In Massachusetts, it currently stands at around 14 percent. And this standard will go up 1 percent each year, but a new law passed last legislative session will increase that by 2 percent a year up to 2020 and then, or 2030, I'm sorry. And then after that, it goes back down to 1 percent, so that by 2030, you're around 35 percent renewable energy. And so how do we really measure that? That's in something called RECs. So all load-serving entities, which are the competitive suppliers in the marketplace, are required to meet the Renewable Portfolio Standard by purchasing renewable energy certificates. So RECs are certificates that represent the environmental attribute of electricity produced from a renewable source. It's not the energy itself, it's more of an attribute that helps us to measure and really count that. So one REC is equivalent to one megawatt hour of renewable energy produced. And in Massachusetts, RECs are classified into categories based on specific criteria. So you have two primary categories. Class 1 RECs are RPS-eligible, uh, projects that began commercial operation after December 31st, 1997, and are directly tied to the electric grid. Things that are older than that are known as Class 2 RECs. So we're gonna look now at how other communities have used RECs in their community choice aggregation programs, and hopefully that will allow us to look at a conversation for what we can do in our next aggregation contract. So I looked at, um, the Department of Energy Resources has a page that aggregates information on the different aggregations across the state. There are 149 communities that currently have approved aggregation plans. Out of those 149 communities, there were about 114 active aggregations that had data that you could analyze. And the, uh, different community choice aggregations have varying level of renewable content, including some that, um, use 100 percent renewable energy with national wind RECs. All of them have to meet RPS. You also had some with a medium level type of Class 1 increased RECs, so anywhere from 5 to 50 percent additional RECs above what is required. And then you also had some aggregations that had 100 percent Class 1 RECs. So if you look at a survey of the different aggregations across that, what I did is I looked out and priced out each of the individual offerings for every approved aggregation where information was available. And this graph will show the difference between the median supply cost for the different types of iterations of renewable energy you have. So at the bottom, you have just standard renewable portfolio, uh, standard types of pricing, which the median price for that is about 10.43 cents per kilowatt hour. Then you have 10.71 cents per kilowatt hour for national wind. And then as it goes up, whether it's increased by 5 percent Class 1 RECs, the anomaly is there were several that had 20 percent Class 1 RECs that were actually lower, and I'm guessing that that's probably a product of the timing of when you go to procure your energy, because that's one of the essential components that will impact your price. And then you have 46 percent, 50 percent, up to 100 percent Class 1 RECs. So the difference between 100 percent Class 1 RECs and just RPS for the median price of all of these is about 2.34 cents.
Excuse me for one sec. Um, Mr. Mason, you have one of these, don't you? Do you have one of the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because everything's in there, too. I saw you taking a picture. I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
You have the info. Okay.
I'm also happy to provide the presentation to anybody afterwards that hasn't had a chance to gather it. So that's kind of the variation in price with different renewable energy content that you have. Then you also have different types of ways that they do the pricing. There's a single rate, there are two rates, and there are three rates seen in aggregations across the Commonwealth. So under the single rate system, you have some where there's just a single rate for everybody within the aggregation that only includes the Renewable Portfolio Standard. There's some aggregation that there's a single rate for everybody within the aggregation that is covered 100 percent with RECs. In most of the aggregations where you did have that 100 percent and everybody is at the same level, they're usually national wind RECs. You also have different two-rate options, and so some two-rate options, some aggregations, what they do, they will offer a green rate, and that's usually anywhere between 5 to 50 percent additional Class 1 RECs that they purchase as their green rate. So that's their standard offering. And then you have 100 percent RECs. You also, within the two pricing structures, can have just a standard renewable portfolio cost, and then people can opt up to 100 percent renewable content. So when there are two rates offered, a lot of times, they, uh, the people within the aggregation can go up to 100 percent if they want, or they can stay at either the standard or the standard which has a higher percentage of RECs. There are also some aggregations that have three different rates that are offered. They'll have a Renewable Portfolio Standard rate, they'll have a green rate, which has a higher percent of Class 1 RECs, and then they'll have 100 percent renewable rate. And depending on how the particular aggregation is set up, you can either, they will be brought into the program at the green rate, and then they can choose to opt down to RPS, or they can opt up to 100 percent renewable. Some also bring everyone in at just the standard RPS, and then they can go to either mid-level green, or they can go up to 100 percent renewable. And so if you're looking at percentages, I know this is a little hard to see, so I can actually share the percentages with you. So the, for the aggregations that have a single rate class, um, and about 80 percent of the aggregations within the Commonwealth have just a single rate class for all of their customers, but of those, it's about half of those, about 49 percent, the single rate class just includes the Renewable Portfolio Standard, and the other portion, about 46 of the aggregations, have just the 100 percent renewable. For the other 20 percent, where there are multiple classes and multiple potential rates, um, there are nine aggregations that have a basic service or a basic RPS rate, a green rate, and 100 percent renewable rate. There are two aggregations that have a green rate and 100 percent renewable rate, and I'm sorry, there are two that have just a green rate and 100 percent renewable, and there are 12 that actually have a basic rate and 100 percent renewable. So you get a little bit of variation within those. So the question that I think we're gonna start to have here, the dialogue we can begin to have, is, so what would Lowell like to do with our next contract? And, um, our current aggregation plan that's been approved through the DPU only allows for a single rate for all customers within it. If we wanted to offer multiple rates to allow varying degrees of renewable content, we would have to amend our aggregation plan. We think that'll take about nine to 12 months, that we require a vote of the city council. And then once it was approved, then we could actually price in that renewable content. But I guess that's what we're hoping to hear from interested members of the community, is that something that we would like to do? What direction would the city council like to go in? And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
All right. Thank you. Um, so let's start with the subcommittee. Any questions? Counselor Cirillo?
Yes, hi. Um, I wanted to verify if Lowell is currently at the 14 percent. And also, um, what's Lowell's data on the renewable energy?
That's an excellent question. So currently, we are, our current pricing and our current contract just has the Renewable Portfolio Standard, so we are meeting the RECs for that percentage. In the past, we did have 100 percent renewable content that included Class 2 RECs, and so, um, that's kind of, I think we had that up until, I want to say, June of last year, and then for pricing purposes, that piece of it was dropped. And so right now, we're just at the Renewable Portfolio Standard level.
All set?
Yes.
Um, Counselor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do apologize for being late. Um, I catch on, um, when I got in there here a few minutes after, you mentioned that Lowell currently only allowed a single contract. Uh, what's the difference between single contract and multi-contract? And, and what would you recommend? Do we, should we stay in a single contract? Would single contract benefited the resident of Lowell, or should be also allowed to multi, uh, multi-contract?
That's an excellent question, Counselor Noon. Thank you for the question. So currently, we can only have a single rate for the people within a rate class in Lowell, so everybody that's within the aggregation right now is paying the same rate. Um, if we went to a, if we went to amend our aggregation program, I think the advantages of that is you would, particularly if you had three different rate classes, what it would allow for, for the rate class that just has the Renewable Portfolio Standard, those prices tend to be a little bit lower, so it could shelter some of our residents that may have more limited income streams, but you're still moving the Commonwealth towards more renewable energy. Having a mid-level or increased amount of Class 1 renewable energy certificates could allow more people, because a lot of times, there's not necessarily a large difference depending on what you want that mid-level to be. There may not be a lot of difference in pricing, and so it could allow you to opt up to a greener rate, which helps to encourage more renewable energy by decreasing the levelized cost of what it takes to build these renewable facilities. And then if you had 100 percent green rate, that would also allow people, particularly people that are very concerned about climate change and really want to allow for the increase in renewable energy supplies. If you had those three rates, you could really have the best of all worlds, I think. But any iteration in between, even if you're only at the Renewable Portfolio Standard, you are still encouraging more renewable energy within the Commonwealth. So it's just a question of what we would like to do to really benefit our residents the most.
Sounds, sounds like you, um, said the three different rate would help you get into your goal, renewable energy goal, faster than the single rate. Is that what I hear?
I, I think, you know, depending on how you define your renewable goal, I think there could be the potential to give people choices. And I think if you give people choices, more people will choose greater renewable content to move towards our emissions goals.
Do you have any recommendation at all, either which, which way we go?
I, I always like to defer to the, the leadership of our city council and our city manager's office. Um, for me, you know, as a resident of Lowell, as a resident of Jackson Street, I would like to see 100 percent renewable option. I would probably choose that option, but I know that I also have a little bit more flexibility in my budgeting process. But even those that don't have as much flexibility, if they wanted to stay at the RPS rate, I think that would be advantageous. And maybe some people in the middle somewhere would want to say, you know, I want to do more renewable energy content, but I can't quite take the premium of the 100 percent renewable. So I think having those different rate structures allow for maximum choice. And again, I would defer to the city council on what they would want to do. The only challenge with those is that, like I said, our current aggregation plan doesn't allow for that, and so we would need the nine to 12-month lead time on that. But I think even if we, um, bid out under our current structure, and then we added these differing rates, once it was approved by the DPU, I think you would still move us towards our renewable goals, give maximum flexibility, encourage renewable energy development, and protect the rate payers of Lowell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Cirillo?
Hi, yes. I don't see any downside to the, the three rates offered option. I, all I hear are options, max choices, savings, green energy, helping our community in, and I don't see the process of nine to 12 months being an issue, especially after, once we're through that process, we get all these wonderful benefits for our, our community. I just, I don't see a downside to that. Thank you.
Um, so for my point of clar, uh, clarification, too, um, I mean, I think what we do want to do as a city is go for the best, what's best for the city, what's price rate, and, you know, reaching our goal here. Um, so have we started that process if we decide to go to the, uh, with the more choices?
We haven't begun the, um, I guess, the bidding process, per se, but even looking at indicative pricing, even indicative pricing shows that it's really a good time to start to look at these options, because with your pricing, a lot of times, it's when you're going into the market and what the market looks like. And so I think as we start to look at pricing now, and if we start the process of amending our aggregation plan to allow for more green options, I mean, you can never, I can't really guarantee anything.
Right, right. A snapshot in time.
But with indicative pricing and the market conditions like they are right now, I think there could be advantages to that.
Right. And I think the one thing we want to take out of this meeting tonight is let's start the process of looking for what's best, you know, whether it's, you know, we want the best for the city to meet our goals and price-wise, and, you know. So I think at the conclusion, once we hear from as many people that came down tonight, um, you know, we want to start tonight looking for that, for the best options, so.
I think that would be advantageous.
Sure. Okay. Um, any late councils have a question before we move? Counselor.
Thank you very much, and I'm very impressed by your knowledge, because it was all like a foreign language to me. And I know that the Department of Utility is offering us to, uh, get the best whatever we can for the city, but, and we have to be flexible to all the people. I know people want renewable energy that is cost-efficient and, um, is green, green energy. But I didn't hear anything about price or cost, or what are we paying now at 14 percent where we're at that level? Uh, what would we need to pay? Um, and I don't know if they're going per kilowatt hours or whatever, and is this just electricity? Is this, uh, gas or both utilities? There's so many questions that I don't understand. Um, so I'm concerned about cost. I know that the bottom line is trying to, you know, conserve energy and things like that, and be adaptable to the environment, but I also want to know equals how much money, and I don't hear any of that, so.
And that's a good question. Uh, Mr. Mason will speak to that later at a meeting I was at them, uh, at a month ago about. Um, it's funny, right now, the green rate is actually the cheapest rate at this point in time, but, um, so it's, it's green, it's cheaper than what we're paying.
See, that's the knowledge.
And that's what we'll get to. Right.
That's the knowledge that people here know, that I don't know, people watching don't know.
And I didn't know that either until I started.
And so this is the, these are the things I want to know. And if that's what it's all about, then yes, I'm all for it as well, because you're, you're meeting both worlds. You're, you're protecting the environment, plus you're, you're getting a savings rate cheaper at, at that. So how could you lose at that? But I don't want it to be a secret. I want people to know that.
Mm-hmm. And that's what we're trying to get out. We have another meeting scheduled next month, and then work on it during the summer. We have a September meeting set up.
And through you to Connor Baldwin, um, is Michael Vaughn the person that purchased this, or is that coming under your domain? Who, I know you're here, you're the chief financial officer, but are you the one that's gonna make the decision? Uh, are you the purchaser, or would that be Michael Vaughn?
Thank you, Counselor. Not for electricity. The city utilizes a broker, um, to purchase electricity, and Catherine and Phil here would be the best served to answer any questions specific to that.
But they would be on board to know what is the best for our, because it's aggregate. We, we, you could opt out, but, uh, right now, what do we have? Who is the supplier of this?
Currently, the supplier is Connecticut Municipal Electricity Corporation.
Right.
And so, but what we're talking about tonight really is the, um, next contract. So this current contract that we, uh, are in right now was bid, um, several years ago. And so there's only about five months left on the contract, so there really wouldn't make sense to do anything now.
Right.
But for, uh, the next contract, that's what we're talking about now, we have basic indicative pricing where it would be around 10.1 cents per kilowatt hour, um, just to maintain the state's minimum. That's the 14 percent RPS.
Right, right.
Right? So that's about 10.1. So if we wanted to green it up, and this is what that slide shows here, the more green that we incorporate into the contract, the higher the price goes. Um, so if we look at it and on this, you can see that there's a difference of about two cents between the state's minimum price and the highest option, which would be 100 percent RECs. And that's based on what Ms. Moses, um... You're, you're protecting the environment, plus you're getting a savings rate cheaper at that. So how could you lose at that? But I don't want it to be a secret. I want people to know that.
Mm-hmm. And that's what we're trying to get out. We have another meeting scheduled next month, and then work on it during the summer. We have a September meeting set up.
And through you to Connor Baldwin, is Michael Vaughn the person that purchased this, or is that coming under your domain? Who, I know you're here, you're the chief financial officer, but are you the one that's going to make the decision? Are you the purchaser, or would that be Michael Vaughn?
Thank you, counselor. Not for electricity. The city utilizes a broker to purchase electricity, and Catherine and Phil here would be the best served to answer any questions specific to that.
But they would be on board to know what is the best for our, because it's aggregate. We, we, you could opt out, but right now, what do we have? Who is the supplier?
Currently, the supplier is Connecticut Municipal Electricity Corporation?
Yes.
And so, but what we're talking about tonight really is the next contract. So this current contract that we are in right now was bid several years ago. And so there's only about five months left on the contract. So there really wouldn't make sense to do anything now.
Right.
But for the next contract, that's what we're talking about now, we have basic indicative pricing where it would be around 10.1 cents per kilowatt hour, just to maintain the state's minimum. That's the 14% RPS.
Right, right.
Right? So that's about 10.1. So if we wanted to green it up, and this is what that slide shows here, the more green that we incorporate into the contract, the higher the price goes. So if we look at it and on this, you can see that there's a difference of about two cents between the state's minimum price and the highest option, which would be 100% REX. And that's based on what Ms. Moses established through her research and data that she obtained from all the aggregations within Massachusetts.
But we'll get periodic notices as to where you are and what your ideas are?
Absolutely, absolutely. So what we're hoping is that out of these meetings, that we come to a consensus on what the city feels is the appropriate level of renewable content within the aggregation's portfolio. So whether or not that's a three-tier rate, so some people can choose the lower rate, some people can choose the mid-rate, and some people could choose the higher 100% rate. And so I agree that that's probably the best option, to give maximum flexibility to the rate payers of Lowell.
But we would have to apply for that, because it's not often unless the council votes, and you say, according to what we're hearing, it takes all these nine months or...
That's correct. That's correct.
Right.
So we, what we could do is on, we would bid in this next contract, we could petition, we could start the process now to go in front of the DPU to amend the aggregation contract to allow for those three rates. We could petition the DPU and tell them that we are going out to bid, and we would like to offer these three rates, and ask for an expedited review, and see what they come back with, and maybe it doesn't take the nine months. But in the past, it has taken the nine to 12 months for other aggregations to get that green rate.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we hear from Mr. Mason, does anybody else have any questions? And then we'll go to the public after this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Frayle, why does it take nine months if we're going to request it? The council votes say tonight to pursue DPU for, to amend our aggregation agreement. Why does it take so long? Or are you saying that it's going to take that long to come up with three options and propose that to the DPU?
No, it's the DPU process.
Right.
So we could come up, let's say that we came up, we were all in agreement tonight that that's what we wanted to do, and we decided on what that mid-level was going to be and what that 100% was going to be. We could tell our consultant tomorrow to start the paperwork with the Department of Public Utilities, file it, and that's where it starts.
And I'm not suggesting we rush into it by any stretch, but if our contract expires in five months, what are we going to do in the interim? Continue with that 10.1 cent kilowatt hour until, are we going to have to amend the, we're going to have to amend the existing contract?
Well, so we could, we could ask the consultant to, ask the Department of Public Utilities if they would allow us to go forward with three rates, to offer three rates. So we would be behind the curve, obviously.
Okay, I guess my, my question is, what are we going to do between the time that this contract expires in five months and the time that we get permission to amend our existing aggregation contract?
Well, if the, if the Department of Public Utilities doesn't grant us expedient review, then we could offer the 10.1. Let's say that we just did an interim rate, right? So we just went for a one-year contract or a six-month contract, and we did that for 10.1, and then we went back out to bid for the three rates, and then, or we could structure it with the supplier who won the 10.1. But it's really up to the DPU.
Right. So I'm, I think it makes sense. I'm concerned how we get this information out. I agree we should give options, but to the average consumer out there, they're confused to death. They get a bill right now that some is for transmission and some is for generation, and quite frankly, I think the bill is confusing to begin with. You're getting it from National Grid, yet we now, we get our power supply from Connecticut Light. So how do we structure the bill? How are consumers going to get the option? Is that going to be included in their bill? Is it going to be a separate mailing? Because as you know, there's many people out there, many companies, that are trying to sell you a cheaper rate. And I'm concerned naturally about the senior citizens, but also the average consumer, that they just pay the bill and...
If you don't mind, could I just answer that? So we'll come up with a solution on trying to make it the easiest way on official letterhead from the city that we can try to get out to the residents and explain it.
Yeah, I think it'd be better to get it from the city first rather than a letter from, who knows? I guess it would be National Grid.
Right, but we'll get it out from a city.
Owner of the infrastructure.
City letterhead, yeah.
So that's, that's actually how it works now, is it's on the city letterhead. So any change to the aggregation on any of the rates comes on city letterhead to your address, and it explains your options, and you can decide on what to do. So whether or not which rate you choose, the lower rate, the mid-rate, or the high rate, or not to participate at all. And so that's all spelled out on city letterhead and a city envelope.
And if, and if consumers decide not to participate at all, what rate are they getting and from whom?
So the default rate here in Massachusetts is the basic service rate. So we're in National Grid territory, so we're under the National Grid basic service rate.
What is their rate right now?
National Grid's basic service rate right now is 13.7 cents.
And right now, we have a community aggregation of 10.1.
No, currently, we're at 13.65. We're below the default rate right now.
Okay, I'm confused. I thought you said we're paying 10.1% kilowatt hour for 14, to meet the 14% standard.
No, so we're talking about the next contract, not the existing contract. Because there's only five months left on the existing contract, so to amend the existing contract to include all additional renewable, it would be onerous.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I just had, so how many communities aggregate for their cities and or towns? All of them?
I believe that, let me go back and remind myself, I think there are 114 that are currently active right now, or for which pricing is available. I think they're...
And why wouldn't those other communities? I know some of them probably have their own municipal light companies, but, I mean, this is a savings for the, for consumer when you aggregate all the electricity use and get a good rate versus just an individual rate from National Grid.
I think that there have been a lot of communities that have done this. I think for some communities, it might be, particularly for some of the smaller communities, it might just be a little bit more difficult for them to actually go through the DPU process, even though there are a lot of really good consultants in the business to help them with that. I think some communities have just chosen not to go through that process at this point in time.
And what do we, what is it, consultant charges? How much do we pay the consultant?
I believe it's .1 cents per kilowatt hour.
For the entire term of the contract?
Yes.
How many kilowatt hours do we use annually?
I don't know. I can find that out for you.
Okay.
And I think that that, that pricing is pretty compatible for other consultants within, at least for all the aggregations that I researched. That's a pretty standard adder to all of their kinds of contracts.
Why do we need a consultant? And no disrespect to the consultant city.
Well, I think...
I just want to know what we're paying for and why do we need them over the long term?
I think the primary reason, I think the primary advantage of the consultant is that they can do work that we don't have the capacity to do in the city, because the DPU process is very onerous, because even the bidding process can sometimes be a little challenging, even for this, the municipal electricity, we do go through a broker, because, again, they're the ones who can really tell us what the market conditions are like, who we need to reach out to, and to get everything regulatorily processed for us to be able to do that. So I think that consultants are well worth their, their .1 cents per kilowatt hour.
Could you let us know what those numbers are? Because we pay, so we pay a broker and a broker, I presume a broker fee for kilowatt hour?
That's the consultant fee, that's the .1.
It's the same, so a broker is a consultant.
And I might be using the terms incorrectly, but I think of them as one and the same.
Okay.
So, but I can get those numbers for you.
Yeah, I think that'd be, and I'm questioning what we're paying for, but it would also be helpful to know what we're getting for it and to continue to understand this process.
Thank you. All set?
All set for now.
Counselor Conway, any questions before we? Okay. Mr. Mason, hear from you.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a document that I received from Mascan, Massachusetts Climate Action Network. They do a lot of work in this area. And we also have Michaela Honduras-McCarthy here tonight, who's done, does a lot of aggregation work in the, in her, in her job, and we might want to hear from her. She probably knows a heck of a lot more about this than I do. But I do, I do, I have learned that there are a number of other communities that have negotiated new deals with different brokers. We're using Colonial Gas, Colonial Power as our broker now. I heard Connecticut, I guess that's the power supplier? But, but as I understand it, it's, it's Colonial Power who is our broker, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they've, they've done our contract, and when things started out, it was great. We've, as you said, saved a million dollars, that's amazing. But I think at this point now, we're paying, as you said, 13.65 cents, and we're not getting any more renewable content than the basic standard, the 14% that's required by the, by the state. So my hope is that we can use this opportunity, use this timing, to look around, see what other brokers can do for us, and see how we can perhaps get a better deal. We're right now looking at cities, I'll give you the most outrageous example, the town of, the city of, the town or city of Newton is, is working with Peregrine as their consultant, and they're paying 11.34 cents per kilowatt hour. So certainly more than the 10 point, more than the 10.1, but a lot less than the 13.65 that we're paying right now. And they're getting an extra 46% of renewable content. So that, that's a huge difference, huge difference. And I think i- if we had the different rate tiers, you would absolutely have people who are interested in paying an extra cent to do something that's more sustainable. I think there's a lot of folks that are interested in that, so. But, you know, that's just one example. I have some copies, could I bring these forward?
Sure. The next meeting, we'll have a presentation. I'm sorry, what was, Jay, what was the woman's name?
Carolyn, Carol Holden.
Carol Holden?
Oldham.
Oldham, and...
She's the executive director of Climate Action Network.
Right, the Climate Action Network, the executive director. Hopefully, we can have her here next month, and she can really lay it out on a chart for us and explain everything, so.
I also have here, and if anybody wants to see me afterwards, these are all other communities, they're all paying between 10 and 11 cents, and they're all getting between 5 and 15, 5 and 25% renewable content. So it's doable, and that's what I would say to Colonial, if I were in the negotiating position, I would, I would ask them, look, match this for us. We're a big city. We have buying power, we have people that care, and there's people that are watching. And, and we think you can do a lot better. And, and maybe we go to a Good Energy or a Peregrine, you know, there's options out there. So it's, it's time to negotiate and, and take advantage of, of the new contract, I think. Could I ask a question, though? I didn't understand, we have to rewrite the structure of our agreement, not with Colonial Power, but with the, but with the utility company?
I'm sorry, I, I was just going to respond to a couple of these questions, because I think there's a misunderstanding. I agree that we can, and I believe market conditions are such right now, that we will definitely be getting a better rate. And it sounds like, from what we've seen in this committee, it sounds like there is a desire to increase the renewable content. Now, I do know that there are other brokers that are out there. Like I said, the research that I compiled showed that they are all about the same percentage of your, it's the .1 mill adder for each of those things. But really, what really dictates your price more than anything else is the timing and the market. It has to do with the length of your contract, it has to do with how much renewable content you're pricing in and when you're pricing it in. Because if you look, I also did an analysis and the, all the aggregations in the state and the suppliers within that aggregation, and within that, I think it was something like 74% of the supply contracts in the state were covered by three major suppliers. And so I think, you know, any broker that you have will be able to go to all the suppliers. And like I said, we're really at an ideal timing right now to where I think we can get really decent pricing. I think with having to go through the DPU process, I mean, I am, we're certainly willing to look at different things, but with the DPU process ahead of us, that nine to 12 months, I think with our existing broker, we already have the language together for that. I think it can expedite that process, and I think it can allow us those more renewable options and a much better period of timing, so we can really get real online renewable energy certificates to help our supply. But that was the only really clarification I was going to add there.
So just so I can be clear, if, if we did want to go and petition the DPU, but if we do it in a general fashion and not through our broker, it takes longer, but if we go through our broker, it may go faster.
I think that if you, if you go with our existing broker, the processes are already in place, because actually, the language to allow for a green rate was something that we had posted publicly as part of going towards our energy efficiency plan. If we're just focusing on being able to get the green rate, then from my understanding, it would just require a vote of the city council, but to do all of the filings, to do all the things to take it through, to get approved through the DPU, is a process that does involve legal work, and that's one of the advantages that a consultant gives us. And so if you were to go with another consultant, there would be contractual changes you'd have to make with the current consultant, there would be additional time to get another consultant on board, and that pushes that nine to 12 months, probably out another year or more. And so that would be my input on that piece of it. But again, we're always happy to look at whatever the city council would like us to look at. But I think what really affects your pricing is the market conditions and what you ask for. We could ask for, if it were approved in our aggregation plan, we can ask for any level of renewable content we want, and we can ask that renewable content to come from various sources. And so I think that's what we're really looking to get a handle on here, is what are those levels and how do we get that through regulatorily?
Sure, okay. Thank you. We only have about 10 minutes left or so. Does anybody in the public show want to come up and say a few words? Thank you. Yeah, just come up and state your name and...
Hi, Steve Malagodi, 200 Market Street. I'm here for 350.org. You going to do those, Sharon? Okay, great. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we need to refocus here. Let's just, let's just look at this first. This is, this is the resolution that the city council passed in 2017, and if, just briefly here, that the city council go on record supporting the goal of using 100% clean and renewable energy in Lowell, including in building and energy use in transportation by 2035. Great goal. Everybody agrees, great goal. That the city of Lowell will continue to take concrete actions to promote clean energy and reduce fossil fuel use, including but not limited to community choice aggregation. It's in the resolution. This language says that the reason, the whole reason that we are looking, that we have community choice aggregation is not the price, it's to reach the goal of 100%. The price is secondary. We need to reach this, this 100% by 2035. This was, this was ratified in 2017. What's happened since 2017? Think of all the climate disasters that we've been hearing about week after week after week. Hurricane Maria, the cyclone that hit Southeast Africa, the forest fires, the floods in Nebraska that have devastated the agricultural industry there. All of these things have happened since 2017. 2017, the, the cost of natural disasters exacerbated by climate change in the United States alone was 300 billion... States alone was $300 billion. The issue is not the price, it's the purpose. The purpose is to get to 100%. Now, right now, we are at 1% above pre-industrial, one degree, I'm sorry, above pre-industrial temperature globally. Under those conditions, you've seen all those disasters. In December or November, the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change issued this report. We are going to 1, to 1.5. If you thought it was bad at 1, 1.5 is logarithmically worse. They're saying we're going to get, get there by 2030, okay? Global warming is likely to reach 1.5 degrees Celsius between 2030 and 2052. Climate-related risks for natural and human species are higher for global warming of 1.5 than they are now naturally. But when we look at 2%, 2 degrees rather, it's a disaster worldwide and we're not on the road to 2%. We're on the road to 4, to 4 degrees, not 2 degrees. We're talking about a global disaster here. I'll just skip this a little bit. The good news is that some of the things, kinds of actions that would be needed to limit global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius are already underway around the world, but they need to accelerate. That's what we're doing here today. It's not about the price, it's about the purpose. So I think we need to refocus into what the real goal is here. John's going to talk about what's going on around the rest of the state.
Thank you. My name is John Grossman, I live at 83 Varnum Ave. I'm not a consultant, I don't work in the energy field. My day job, I work for a labor union and I think, a couple of quick points. Number one, the need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our, as we, in our energy consumption is not a personal preference. It's something, as Stephen just pointed out, that has a significant impact on the climate, on all of our lives and on our kids' futures. And if you read the report from the scientists, it's a serious problem. We need, every level of government needs to confront it and here in Lowell, we should do what we can to confront that problem. So we've heard all about one way of solving it, which, not solving it, but of helping to avoid the worst impacts of climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions, by having more renewable energy as part of our electric supply. And I just want to make a couple of quick points on that. As Jay pointed out, other towns have successfully done that and this is the flyer that he was passing around. Other towns have chosen green energy more than the state minimum standard. The state minimum standard, every town has to do, but it's very low, it's 14%. It goes up 2% a year. That is not going to address the problem at the speed that the situation requires. So we need to speed that up. Some towns are doing 5% extra, some are doing 10, some are doing 46% extra and they're all paying less than we are. So I agree with Steve, price is not the first issue because the price of not doing this for our kids is going to be much higher than any price we pay today. But people have to live and we can do both. We can get green energy and pay less than we're paying now. Second point, next point is, we have to be careful, well, we've been talking about brokers and I'm not in the market to promote any particular broker. We note that the towns that have gotten this additional green renewable energy have used the same couple of brokers. So I think some brokers are experienced with particularly supplying renewable energy as opposed to just getting the best deal they can. And I would urge the, the city councils to consider that fact when thinking about what to do about a broker. Also, the program has an opt-out component. Nobody has to get, today, nobody has to get the Lowell aggregation. Most people get it because most people don't opt out. And if we're serious about addressing the problem of climate change, then we need to make sure that the default option in our new program is the increased renewable energy. And if somebody wants to go with National Grid basic instead, if it turns out that ends up being cheaper, which today it is not, but if it turns out that it ends up being cheaper and somebody wants to do that, they can opt out and do that. But it's very important that the default option be the green option. The other point to make is the difference between Class 1 and Class 2 renewable energy credits. And this gets into a lot of details and we've had a very good presentation today. But the only reason to insist on renewable energy is to increase the supply of renewable energy into the grid here in Massachusetts. And it's really only Class 1 renewable energy credits that guarantees that that will happen. The Class 2 renewable energy credits, or R E C, RECs, don't ensure that. Many of those Class 2 RECs are sold by existing renewable energy suppliers that are going to sell their energy regardless of whether they get the REC payments or not. The Class 1 RECs are designed to promote new renewable energy suppliers coming online, that's why the definition requires them to be built recently. They need that REC income in order to make a profit and the state minimum requires a certain amount of Class 1 RECs. So there's a built-in demand and we want to add to that demand by saying we want X percent more than the state minimum. So I would strongly encourage the city council to recommend as high a renewable energy increase over the minimum standards as you can see your way to recommending. We see that one town is 46% above. We should be able to do that, they're paying less than we are. Let's see what the prices are when we go out to bid, let's make that the default option. Our kids will be really glad that we did that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sure, quickly and then we've got a recess.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ty Chom and I'm from the Highlands. And I'm here, I'm very excited to be here because first of all, I love the cities and to know that we're the largest, we're the largest, we're the fourth largest in Massachusetts and we're going to be doing something amazing with clean and renewable energies, that's amazing. You know, I feel like we were a mentor to other cities. To think that we could have 50 to 100% clean energy, clean and renewed energy, that is awesome. I'm looking forward to it and, and you know, I see that the bike is going really well, everybody's enjoying it and that's amazing. So I'm looking to see if we couldn't copy this CCA into the program and make it happen so everybody could enjoy it also. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have another meeting, I believe it's May 21st, right? And we'll get more people to speak, but right now I think we need a motion to recommend that we make a rec...
Start the paperwork?
Yeah, so make, what would the, Catherine, what would the motion be? Start the process for petitioning the DP?
Start the paperwork, the process for... I think that would be an appropriate motion to start the process to amend our aggregation program to allow for new renewable energy content.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. With the understanding also that, I know you said that stay with the same broker and get the paperwork going, but make sure that it's clear to our broker that we want the rates that the other companies, the other brokers are using and that's what we're going to, you know, that's what we're looking for and if not, we'll make a determination at that point.
Can I just add one?
Sure, one second. Okay, is that doable?
I, I think that's reasonable and the broker is actually in here tonight and I, so I think, like I said, I think there's an opportunity within the market conditions right now and the things that we've already put in place to make this happen relatively quickly for the benefit of Lowellians.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Sorillo and then we got to wrap up.
Hi, yes. You had mentioned that Lowell has Class 2 RECs, correct, currently?
That was under a previous iteration of the aggregation, we had Class 2 New England-based hydro RECs.
Okay, so how would it be possible, or will it be possible for Lowell to get Class 1?
All you have to do, once we get the approved aggregation plan, then as we go out to bid, we would just need to determine what we want to bid for. A lot of the 100% renewable that had the multiple tiers, the 100% renewable are actually Class 1 RECs.
Okay, so, so I, I would like to have that as part of the motion, if that's possible.
All right, it wasn't listed.
So as part of the motion, what you'd like to look us, look to us to do, in addition to amending the aggregation program to allow for a greener rate, which includes Class 1 RECs.
Class 1 RECs, yes. That, that would be, that would be my amendment to the motion.
Okay, thank you. So seconded, yep.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you have that, right? Okay. All right, so thank you, everybody, for coming down and we're going to meet next month. So we'll recess for now, is that where we vote motion to adjourn? Yep.
So moved. Set, seconded.
Third.